Good morning. It is Tuesday, April 21st, 2020, 9:00 a.m. I'd like to welcome everyone this morning to our special call meeting. At this time, I've asked Commissioner Hale to do our invocation and our pledge. If everyone please stand.
Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to gather to do the work of the people and do the work of your will, Lord. Lord, we pray that you'll watch over our nation, our community, as we navigate through these troubling times. Lord, we know that you can give us the answers, you can give us the guidance, and that's what we pray for this morning, Lord. Pray for your forgiveness, pray for your healing hands, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible).
At this time, our first item in the business is approval of minutes from our April 14th, 2020, special call meeting. Do I have any questions, comments, or do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Gamble?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Moving ahead to our consent agenda, I have items two through 10. Do I have any questions or comments on any items, or do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Hale?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamble. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, we'll move forward to our general business, item number 11. Discussion on COVID-19. Mr. Harris, we'll start with you this morning. You have a couple of things.
You know, at this point, we've done just about all that we can do. And for the public's benefit, let me just share, those that may be viewing this on YouTube or something for the first time, clearly, we're in the Coliseum, we're trying to maintain the distancing recommendations best we can, which means we're not holding our meetings at the judicial annex in closer proximity to one another. I'll also share that with bid openings, which we would typically have at the judicial annex, we're probably going to have those here. We've rearranged some of the timelines for openings of bids, which according to the statute, we have to do publicly. We're also arranging for, we're incorporating some software that we're purchasing to do some teleconferencing for bid openings for those that otherwise would travel here from out of town to participate in those meetings. So we're doing everything within reason that we can do. All of our public notice signage is out in the county right away. Some of that's in DOT right away. I had contacted DOT, representative of DOT about that, so you'll see a lot of those "for before" signs around the county. We continue to encourage everyone to maintain safe distancing that, from all accounts, and for those who keep up with the daily and nightly news on this, that seems to still be our best defense in trying to combat this virus. I don't know that there's much more that we can do. We've minimized the number of employees that we can by this time by identifying those that we consider for this purpose to be nonessential, and I don't know that we can reduce our workforces any more than that right now. So we've done everything that we can do. Oh, I'm sorry, let me just mention, we are doing business a little bit different with the building department zoning. We're asking for people to make appointments or drop materials off, and then we're going ahead and reviewing materials and then contacting people when they can come back and pick them up and obtain permits. We've put the plexiglass up at all the counters that we can put up with not only county commission departments but constitutional offices that have made those same types of requests. I know that some of them have altered hours in their procedures as well to try to keep things as safe for their employees and for the public as they can. So I think at this time, we've done about all that we can do. I do want to mention that, and Commissioners, I put a copy of the letter in front of you, that the Chairman and I last, I think it was Friday, put a letter together asking for some participation from the Governor and some additional assistance if we can obtain that from the state. We ask a very general question about what additional assistance we can get from the state. We also ask for a conference call, and we're waiting to hear back from the Governor's office about that. I know there's been particular concern with the facility in Swanee County where we've seen the greatest number of these cases, and I feel that lots of phone calls from the public at large that have relatives in that facility. I know that Commissioners, you have heard from a lot of the same people because we've discussed it clearly. We want everything to be done that can be done within that facility. One thing that we're doing is asking the Governor's office to use his executive authority to potentially, if they will agree to do it, try to get some additional outside oversight within the facility. Now, I don't make that statement lightly. I don't want to imply that anything improper is going on over there with the types of concerns that we've all heard expressed to us from constituents throughout the county, your constituents, and those that put you in these positions to try to be the responsible party to make decisions in this community to ensure everyone's safety and well-being. Those comments have led us to the point where we're going to be requesting that the Governor appoint someone to provide some additional oversight inside that facility. Fortunately, there's already an agency that has that responsibility. They actually handle the licensing and the regulation of those types of facilities, and very likely, if the Governor agrees, it will be that agency. The acronym used is ACHA. I've done some research on them. They actually have all of the responsibility associated with these facilities, so that's what we're going to be requesting, and I'll give you an update on that later. Mr. Chairman, I don't know that I'm, if I'm overlooking anything that we've discussed about what we plan to talk to the Governor about.
The only thing I'd add is that you did reach out to Mr. Rubio's office also.
That's correct. I've had a number of conversations with Senator Rubio's office. They've been very willing to assist where they can. The one thing that I had expressed to them yesterday, and I believe Mr. Waldron is here and he may speak to this as well, but as you know, there were tests that were administered at the facility last week, then we learned over the weekend that those tests were faulty. And I'll let Mr. Waldron speak to that, he knows more about the details on it, but I spoke to Senator Rubio's office about that. I said, "At the very least, I know that the federal government is trying to ensure that an adequate number of testing kits are available throughout the state and the nation, and I asked them to look into the quality of those tests that are being shipped out to states and counties and see if we can, if the federal government can do a better job of trying to ensure the quality of those test kits before they go out, because that seems to be a problem." That's essentially the problem that we had here. It was a problem with the quality of the product that was sent for that testing, so now all that testing has to be done over again. And when you've got people that are very interested in getting results back, they don't need to be told that it's going to be delayed for any number of days. So that's unfortunate that that occurred, but it did occur. Senator Rubio's office assured me that they're going to be looking into that, they'll get back with us. They also indicated they were calling the Governor's office to have some conversation with the Governor's office as well about what might be offered to Swanee County going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. At this time, I'd like Mr. Waldron, if you'd come forward, to provide us with your weekly update. Welcome, sir.
Welcome. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm going to be brief in all the details I think we know about the state, and you can go to our website, Florida Department of Health, and review the dashboard. But we've, so far in our county, have tested 470 individuals. Of that, 368 have been negative. We will be announcing four additional cases this morning. That'll bring our total of positives in our county to 102. Of those four, three are residents of a long-term care facility, one is an employee. Of those four, some good news is that one of the individuals has already been retested because they're in the hospital, and they have already showing a negative. So we are seeing some recovery in some of our folks. We do know that our youngest is a five-year-old, and our oldest is a 102-year-old female. The five-year-old has recovered, and we're beginning to see some recovery among those who were tested early on that were positive. So that's a good sign. The state is also working at a way to capture the recovery rate. We've had discussions on our daily phone calls with the Department of Health, so hopefully this week, we'll have some guidance on how we can better disseminate those that are in recovery. Based upon my rough calculation of 14-day quarantine for those who are positive, we should have approximately 30 people back that should be recovered. Of course, I would caveat that to say it all depends on your medical condition, it all depends on your health. Some of the healthcare workers have been able to recover quite quickly and can go back to work provided they wear their PPE, which is their protective. As far as our nursing home facilities, I want to spend a few moments and go back over some things that have taken place in a long-term care facility and what we are doing with our other long-term care facilities. I had emailed everyone last week, and if you're not getting your emails from me, I'm sending it to the Swanee Commission email address. If you prefer a different way, then please let me know, and we can, we'll do our best to accommodate you. But that's the emails that we have, and I do send that out to Mr. Harris, as well as our Emergency Operations Center and the Sheriff, and to all of your email addresses. But when we had our first indication that we had a positive in an employee that worked at a long-term care facility, so March 29th, we immediately notified the State Emergency Operations Center on that date. On the 30th, we had an infection preventionist come in to do an inspection of that facility and their infection control procedures. Then on April 1st, we took in a Department of Health team, which was myself, my Director of Nursing, an Epidemiologist, and Representative from ACHA, which is the Administration for Healthcare. We went into that facility and spent several hours making our assessment. Then following that, on that Saturday, we had a decontamination team that came in that went through that facility and decontaminated several of the rooms and a common area. Also on that day, a nurse strike team consisting of four nurses came into that facility and spent three days there. Later that week, on the 7th and 8th, ACHA sent in a surprise visit. They sent in two surveyors into that facility to do a complete inspection, and they found no deficiencies. They did not cite them for any deficiencies. Subsequently, we had the opportunity to bring in some additional resources to help do a mass testing. That's when the Governor and the Secretary, excuse me, the State Surgeon General wanted to increase the number of testing for our elderly. We begged and asked, and we did receive a permission or a mission, as they call it, from the Department of Emergency Management to send in a National Guard unit to come in and test all those remaining folks in that facility as well as employees. They swabbed 100 residents and 38 employees. I found out on Saturday, and once I found out, I immediately notified Mr. Harris, but unfortunately, the medium that the Department of Emergency Management sent with the National Guard, this was an effort that was orchestrated at the state level through the Emergency Operations Center, the medium that they used was not the best medium to use. They had had previous issues with this medium. This medium had been on hold for all the health departments not to use. Somehow, the state sent those medium kits with the National Guard. When they arrived at the lab, the tubes and all had severe leakage and contamination among all the samples, so they could not be used. That did not sit well with me, and so I've spent all weekend working with the State DOC, pretty much demanding that we get retested as quickly as possible. Today, we have three nurses in that facility that are going through and retesting all of the residents as well as the staff. When we leave here, I'll be going by that facility to check on that and make sure that's going smoothly. I have been told and assured by the folks in Tallahassee at the Emergency Operations Center that they do have better testing kits, so this is, we should have no issues. These will be sent out to the state lab, and we should have results back fairly quickly. I do want to echo what Mr. Harris has indicated. The Department of Health, we are public health folks that provide guidance and assistance in times of infectious disease and infection control. ACHA is the agency that regulates and licenses these nursing home facilities. It is not under the purview of the Department of Health. We can go as far as we can go to advise, to educate, to help train, to provide services, and provide assistance, but as far as going in and saying, "We're going to take over and run your facility," we just don't have that authority. I can say that this facility has been extremely cooperative with us. Everything that we've asked for, every bit of information we've asked for, employee logs, resident rosters, they have provided that to us. We've been in constant contact with the local administrator, with the regional Director of Nursing, and with the Director of Clinical Operations for the entire parent company. So we have had numerous conversations. We've had a lot of support from them, and we try to support them as much as we possibly can. We have also offered to all of our, to all of our nursing home facilities over the weekend through the Governor's Directive and through the State Surgeon General, they are making it available to submit any nursing home facility that wishes to have what they call mass testing. We are to send their name, the number of people that they have, residents, the number of employees for mass testing, and they will be put on a list, and it will be determined and decided at the state level what facilities will be getting the mass testing. Of course, they're looking at facilities that already have an existing case, whether it's among a resident or within, among an employee. So far, we have had one, two, four of our nursing home facilities to ask to be placed on that list. One, of course, already has had a National Guard strike team. There have been three additional nursing facilities in our community that we have submitted their name. We will continue to track that and insist that our folks get some special attention and that they become one of the nursing facilities that can come in and do that. Right now, we do not have any positive cases in any other facility at this time. However, what does raise a concern are that there are employees that live in our community that work in other counties and other nursing home facilities that are experiencing cases of COVID. So we will be monitoring that very, very closely and working with those as close contacts to ensure that we can contain that or that these individuals can contain that. So I do want to mention that there are people that live in Swanee County that work in other facilities that are experiencing. Also, we are offering some additional services that was being rolled out this past weekend. It's called an IMT, which stands for Incident Management Team, where they will send in a group of individuals to look at your infection control policies, your infection control procedures. They will look at educating you and your staff on infection control activities and everything that you can do to make sure your facility stays clean. And also, they will be looking at the PPE burn rate, how quickly are you going through your mask, your gloves, your goggles, and so forth, to make sure that we can keep the employees safe so that when they have contact with a resident, there will be no transference. So we have sent this out to offer it to all of our nursing home facilities. Of course, I remind you, I'm over both counties, Swanee and Lafayette, and so I'm waiting back to hear from those individuals. This is all voluntary. We can't force or make someone take these services, but we certainly are encouraging them to because it's free, it's not going to cost them anything. And the environment that we're currently in, it would be great to have a second set of eyes to come in and look at your, look at how you're doing your infection control and how your staff is wearing their PPE and how they're interacting with the patients. I believe, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Waldron. Do I have any questions from the board?
Chair, I do.
Yes, there's Mr. Fleming.
Thank you. I have my question, well, a comment and a question. I did talk with a county administrator last night, and I was relieved that you were working hard, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
For this county. But would it be safe to say that there's a decline with the 30 that will be coming off of this COVID virus? We knew that the numbers would slightly increase, but would it be safe to say that the cases are dwindling?
Yes, sir. Here's what we're seeing, and we base this upon the number of folks that are showing symptomatic that we can test. Again, not everybody is a candidate for testing. If you have no symptoms, we won't test you at the Health Department because we're following CDC guidelines and the Department of Health guidelines that prioritize those that will be tested. Those are folks that are symptomatic in healthcare, first responders who are symptomatic, anyone over the age of 65 with underlying medical conditions, and residents in nursing facilities that are symptomatic. So we prioritize that so that we can not misuse our testing equipment, because, you know, we're getting a decent supply, but we won't have enough to test everybody. And so if you're asymptomatic and test negative, that doesn't mean you can't get the virus moving down the road. Yes, we're seeing a decline in the number of folks that are symptomatic that we are testing. We're still getting calls, we're still triaging. We work closely with all of the medical providers in our community, and for the most part, all but a couple are testing. We have two that aren't testing, and we're going back to revisit with a provider when we leave here so that we can have that discussion on why they aren't testing. So we're going to have, this will be about the fourth time we've had conversations with them. But we are seeing a decline in the number of folks that are requesting or needing to be tested. The way the state calculates and counts the COVID positive cases, it's like if a dog has 30 puppies and you sell 20 of those puppies, that doesn't mean you only got 10 puppies left. You still got 30 puppies. Same way with COVID. Once it's a positive, it will always be a positive case, even though once they recover, the numbers will still show it being a positive case. Same way with how they're counting the deaths. We have, unfortunately, eight deaths in our community. Of those eight deaths, every one of them had underlying medical conditions that, quite honestly, could have been the cause or the reason for their demise. Because they were COVID positive, that is connected to a COVID positive case. For example, I could walk out in front of a bus and get run over and die, but because I was COVID positive, it is going to be contributed to the fact that I was COVID positive, not that I was stupid enough to walk out in front of a bus.
You did say last week that would be a pivotal point. You probably know, we would probably know where we stand. How do you feel about it? Where are we standing at now?
I'm feeling much encouraged because, again, the calls that we're getting has declined, the number of folks that we're seeing or requesting testing has declined. What does concern me now is once we retest these 100 individuals, and if other nursing homes are fortunate enough to get a strike team in to test all of them, those numbers could very well increase because you're testing en masse, so you're testing more people. So that could increase based upon if they go in and do mass testing in all the nursing home facilities. The other caution that I have is what I mentioned previously, employees that live in Swanee County but work in a nursing facility in a neighboring county. You know, if there's outbreaks in those facilities and we're testing, then of course, those folks have to be quarantined, they have to be isolated, and we have to monitor that. So that's where we're trying to keep the spread within our community confined. We currently do not have wide community spread, and we want to keep it that way.
Thank you, Mr. Waldron.
That answer your question?
Any other questions from the board? Ma'am, I got you in just a second. Just let me get through the board questions, and then I'll bring you up. Just give me just one moment, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Waldron, you had mentioned that they didn't find any wrongdoings out there that pretty much everyone that's come in has just been to assist and to evaluate and to help, basically. The ones that are testing positive employees I'm speaking of have to be quarantined. Do you know if there's any other agencies or anyone that's stepping in to help as they have to let employees go home to quarantine themselves? Because the way I understand it, they're really struggling as far as boots on the ground out there from time to time.
We've made an offer to the nursing home facility through the State DOC office to bring in the U.S. Public Health Services Corps, which is a medical team. We made that available, offered that to the facility on Friday. At this point, they said that no, that they had sufficient staff from their other facilities. They've got a large nursing home in Lake City, they've got several out in the Panhandle and even facilities in Mississippi, so that they had adequate staff to come in and work with their patient ratio. So they declined that offer at that time. I told them that anytime you want this to happen, let me know, we can, we will work towards making that happen. But according to the folks at the corporate, they are sufficiently staffed to handle their patient count at this time. Now, their patient count has reduced, their census, what we call a census, has significantly declined from where they were the 1st of March. So they've got fewer residents. A good number of those residents are hospitalized and getting hospital care.
Got you. Chris?
Yep. The only thing I would add to that is, I have spoken to several of the employees out there, and I do want to thank our community for getting behind the prayer that was out there. I think we spoke about this at the last meeting, but again, it meant a lot to them. I've had the opportunity to speak to quite a few of them since then. They feel the pressure out there. Those employees, they feel the pressure, and I want them to know that this community's behind them and all the things they're going through, along with the residents that are out there. And thank you guys for what you're doing as well.
It is, it's tough in our community, and it's tough to lose a loved one. It weighs heavy on all of our hearts, also with those employees, because a lot of those employees are working long hours. They used to work in eight-hour shifts, some are doing, you know, 10, 12, 14-hour shifts. So it does take a toll on the community. We need to continue to support them. I do understand that in other nursing home facilities in other counties, there have been significant issues found where there have been some orders issued removing the license from some administrators. We have just not seen anything in this nursing home facility that would warrant such action. They're doing everything they possibly can to work towards, towards making that facility a safer and a more cleaner spot for all those residents. We're in daily, constant communications, I mean, I'm talking seven days a week with this facility, as well as our other facilities.
And I guess one last thing, just for the public knowledge, you mentioned the word medium earlier in those tests. For public information, could you explain what that is? Because I know I've been asked that several times.
I'm going to put it, because I'm just a little, little old dumb country boy, it's liquid inside a vial, and we take a swab and we stick that swab in that vial. It's transported to the lab where they have to shake it and spin it and then determine if it's positive or not. And in this particular medium, it's not as, it takes longer to get the spinning and get the reading from the, whether it's positive or negative, but because of the type of vessel it's shipped in, it is prone to leakage. And once a vessel leaks onto something else, it's contaminated the whole batch. Even though they're sealed, even though they're supposed to be protected, it can cross-contaminate. So therefore, you can't test.
Thank you. You're good.
Mr. Chairman, just one question. You mentioned PPEs. This facility or any of the other ones, are they having a hard time getting gloves and masks, or do they have sufficient amount? And if they don't, is there anything that we, your DOC, can do to help?
We ask that question constantly with them. We have put them in contact with the Emergency Operations Center. I know they have received some supplies that come in. Their priority has been to get those to the nursing home facilities. At this point, we're, you know, there's been some concern about hand sanitizers and some of the surgical masks, but the State DOC has been pushing out large numbers of those, of the surgical mask and other masks, out to these facilities. At this point, this particular facility in question has, we've asked them on a daily basis, they said, "No, they have sufficient supply of PPE at this time." Gowns are hard to get. Gowns are hard to get, which is the, the better, it's easier to put on and take off, but the gowns have been more difficult to receive. But at this point, I don't know if Sharon, Ms. Higginson's in here or not, but at this point, I'm not aware of any facility that's in dire need. And we continue, we ask that every day. So we continue to monitor that and we connect them with the local EOC office.
Thank you.
Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Waldron, I've gotten a couple of phone calls today from concerned citizens, or this week, concerned citizens about the use of any type of masks in the community while people are out and about. And I know a lot of larger communities that have been dealing with large numbers of COVID-19 cases around the nation, not just in our state, have considered and adopted some resolutions requiring mask use out in public. My question to you is, would you recommend that for our community, number one, and number two, at this point? And number two is, if you don't, why?
Well, first of all, we follow the guidance of the CDC and the Department of Health and if you've read the CDC website, they are encouraging those individuals that go out into public that cannot self-disence more than six feet to wear a mask. And it doesn't have to be a surgical mask. They are saying that the cloth masks are okay, that they're not the best, but that's at least a layer of protection. So at this point, if you're out in public and you feel like that you cannot be more than six feet from somebody, it is encouraged through the CDC to wear a mask.
So my concern while I'm out in public is that there are a lot of people that for some reason can't seem to self-distance from others. And I've got a mask.
Then you would want to wear a mask.
I would love to wear a mask and I do wear a mask most of the time. It's, the concern is whether this board ought to consider adopting any type of a requirement for this county because of the number of cases that we have. And I realize that a vast majority of these cases are, they're in the facility or related to a facility and not very many of them that are community-related. That's why I ask for your recommendation.
Correct, because right now, out of all of our cases, 12 are not connected to this facility. Of those 12, there are two sets of husband-wives who are self-isolated and from what we can trace, were the reason for each other becoming ill. So right now, that means there's eight other cases and some of those cases have already, what they say, converted or have recovered. So we do not have wide community spread. It is all confined to a facility. What we have to do is ensure that those residents that need to be hospitalized are hospitalized and that those employees that are possible or symptomatic need to be isolated and stay home until their symptoms change.
Thank you for your input on this. I would just simply say I appreciate everyone who's out and about, who's doing everything that they can to keep this from spreading and if that means wearing a mask, I see a few people here who have masks on, if that means just staying more than six foot away, I appreciate that. And to all the others, I would encourage you, please, consider other people. If you don't consider yourself, at least consider the others that you either may be affecting or making feel extremely uncomfortable or that you could be carrying to someone else.
Well, I would highly encourage those folks that are wearing PPE, which includes the mask, the gown, the gloves, the goggles, be sure you're wearing it appropriately because if not, then it's ineffective. And I've seen folks out in the community with their mask on, but it's below their nose and that you need to keep it from your nose down to your chin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waldron. If you'd take a seat close to the front right here for a minute, I have a young lady, if you'd come forward. I'd like to welcome you this morning. If you would give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. I'm Linda Owens and I have to tell you, I am so impressed. I have family members who are at that particular nursing home. My parents were there. I appalled the nursing home. I have nothing there, doing a great job. I have family members who are working there, been working there for years. I have family members who have tested positive there. I have family members who have tested positive who are not there. My concern and my thought is that, yes, we test the ones that are at the nursing home, but do you know that when the workers leave the nursing home, they go home to their families? And when I say they go home to their families, they have extended families that they're with. So how adequate are we when we start talking about this virus, the numbers that are here in Swanee County? Because the people who they live with, the people whom they go home to in the communities, they're all together. So will they be tested? I know you talk about symptoms and I too have been studying up on this, is sometimes there aren't any symptoms. So you're walking around with it and you don't even know you have it. So now it's beginning to, right now, we're saying it's upon the control, but is it really upon the control? Do we know who has it? And I appalled you when you said wear your mask, because you don't know who have it, who with it, who has it, who are not? Because I was with a family member, had no idea, they had no idea that they had it. Then all of a sudden, this family member had it. I've lost family members to this virus. And my concern is, the nursing home, Lord, thank you so much for what you're doing out there, because I have several family members there, working there. I have a granddaughter who works as a respiratory therapist who's extremely close to this virus in Gainesville. She talks about the C people on those respirators, because she's the one who's doing out in effects. And you can't see your loved ones. So how and what can we do in Swanee County to not just test those that are in this nursing home and those who are working in this nursing home? What about, since they've gone out into the community? And you know as well as I know, when they walk out that nursing home, some of them, they're not wearing their protective gears. So they're out in our community and now it's been, who knows, how many of us who have it? Because we can't what? Get tested because why? We don't have the symptoms. Some of the people, some of us, we'll say, oh, well, it's just maybe a touch of the flu, we're just whatever. So that could be a case of it. So how and what are we gonna do as a community-wide to get up a testing center saying, okay, not just if you think you've got symptoms, those family members who have the symptoms and gone home to their families, those families, the whole entire family should have been basically tested. Maybe some have strong immune systems, stronger immune systems than the others. So down the line, it can be developed where they have these symptoms. They go out, they whatever, go out to see their grandma, grandpa, whoever. So not those grandparents who have it.
Yes, ma'am.
So my thing to you is what are your plans on doing about the entire community being tested?
We won't have some, we have someone wants to answer the question for you right here.
Hey, how are you doing?
I'm Cindy Morgan. I'm the nursing director at the Health Department. To answer your question a little bit, when we do, especially the employees at the nursing home, we contact them, we do contact tracings, we get their close personal contacts, we contact those contacts and they also have to self-isolate for 14 days. The Health Department staff calls these contacts every day or every other day to say, how are you feeling? Do you have a fever? Are you monitoring your temperature? If you become symptomatic, please let us know as soon as possible and we will test those people. So we're not just ignoring the rest of the family. You know, the people that test positive give us their contacts and that's all we have to go by is the contacts that they give us.
Right, I understand that. Most of the people who get it, it's just like we got work, pretending. People didn't want to tell people that they had. And it's like, oh my God, about the virus. Can't tell people that it has the virus. And this is what I'm finding now, is some people, their homes and the mental, the mental part of it. And so they do not tell you that they've been tested positive for this virus. And that's the part that's funny, because I know personally, the situation, and when the person became so ill, then they decided, say, look, this is what's going on with me. So now, so many people have been there with these people and everybody, like, everyone's running scared now. Oh my God, this is bad.
Mr. Waldron, you'd like my comment?
Let me help address that. You're absolutely right. This is not an illness to be stigmatized over at all. The recovery rate for COVID is extremely, extremely high. Most of the folks that have passed from COVID-related illness had underlying, severe underlying medical conditions. COVID just accelerated their demise, which is extremely unfortunate. So, you know, there is a toll on mental health that's currently taking place among everybody that has it or doesn't have it. You're right, there are asymptomatic folks that have tested positive. That percentage is not as great as those that are symptomatic, but, you know, this is a virus that has a lot of unknowns to it that we're, unfortunately, every day we're learning something new and different about it because even some of the symptoms have changed to where before it was fever, it was shortness of breath, and it was coughing. Now we're seeing some folks that have tested positive that have lost their taste and smell. So it's changing on us. But I want to emphasize, this is, if you have symptoms, if you're feeling sick, if you're feeling ill, please contact your medical provider and have this discussion with them. A lot of medical offices are doing telehealth where you can call in and they can video chat with you to assess your conditions. This is nothing to point fingers at and blame anybody. This is a sickness that's running through the United States, it's hitting our community fairly hard, but this is nothing to be ashamed of. It's nothing that you specifically caused or brought on yourself. We have to work with you, but if you are ill, you need to let us know. And I know growing up as a kid in school, they used to touch you on the shoulder and say, ooh, you got the cooties and that'd all run away. This is not a time for that at all. We have, we've really got to work together as a community for the mental health and well-being of everybody and get that message out. Fine, I appreciate you, Ms. Owens, for bringing that up. This is nothing to be ashamed of or scared of. This needs, you need to be heightened in your awareness and if you feel sick, if you're having symptoms, please contact your provider.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments this morning. Sheriff St. John, you have a comment?
For Carrie, since you brought that up, is that I get a lot of calls and comments like on our Facebook page, the ones that have tested positive, a lot of the time they say, how many has recovered? And I don't know if that's possible to give the numbers out, that hey, so-and-so has, X has had it, but X has recovered. I think that might make the community feel better that, like I say, this is not something to be, not really ashamed of, but that they've had it and recovered and they're doing fine. Do you think that's possible or that would help the community say, hey, yes, I did have it, but I recovered and I'm fine and I'm doing, and I'm doing okay? I just, I get a lot of comments about that.
You know, Sheriff, I'm not sure if you've heard my earlier comments this morning. We are working through the state on how we can better calculate the recovery rate for some consistency statewide. The virus affects everyone differently and so it might take some seven days, some 14, some 21 days. We do know that there's a resident that has, going on their third or fourth test and they're still positive. So to give you an accurate, consistent recovery number, we're waiting, we're looking for directions from the Department of Health statewide in our database, because our database collects positives, but it doesn't necessarily push a button or, so give me a report on all those that are recovered because it just does not track that at this point. I do know, as I mentioned to the board a few minutes earlier, based upon the early onsets of folks in our community that identified as being positive, based upon their 14-day isolation period, we should see approximately 30 of those should have already recovered and been able to be off of quarantine. But again, it affects everybody, everybody differently. But we're working on trying to get a more consistent approach statewide to how we can identify the recovery rate.
Thank you, Mr. Waldron. Thank you and your staff. Sheriff, if you can come back to the front here, I've got a question for you. I just wanted to ask you while you was up here, are you getting many calls about having many problems with gatherings and things of that nature?
We have some, you know, but not many, but we have some that, you know, we go out there, you know, and here again, we talk to them, tell them they've got to have, you know, 10 or less and so forth and they all have complied with us. We've got a couple of calls about some nonessential businesses, you know, and once we go there, well, like one, for example, was a grooming, grooming facility and we went there, which they had, where they was housing some pets there and they were just there feeding the dogs. So the public is, they're very good about calling us, you know, when they see something that's not out of place and so forth and the gatherings that appear to be, you know, more than 10 or so forth and we're getting a lot of, not a lot of calls, but we are getting calls about them. And once we go there, you know, we explain to everything and they comply. And then in some of the nonessential business, you know, they have a legitimate reason to be, they're not conducting business, they're just there because of stuff that they have to do on a personal basis.
I got you. Thank you for that. Do I have any questions for the sheriff while I got him here?
Mr. Chairman, I didn't have a question for, I spoke with him earlier, but I did call him on Sunday night on the issue that was brought to my attention. And I'm so glad to see so many of the residents that live in the district too here today because there's some things that I'd like to speak about. And if you don't mind, I'm really concerned about the city of Iowa. I don't see, I see some city officials here this morning, but I'd like Police Chief to come up to the podium.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes.
If we can, just on the heels of what Commissioner Fleming's saying there, I was gonna say for public knowledge, and I'm glad you brought this up, there are some officials here, Ms. Higginson's here, both the chiefs are here and Chief Davis as well. I think for public knowledge and public, you know, just reassurance that we are all doing what we can, I'd like for each one of them to come up here and just speak to the public, speak to the matter as, you know, we're all in this together, we talked about it. I know we feel handcuffed at times, I know I do up here, not knowing what we can do as a board, but having all these folks involved in our community, I think that's a positive and I want to share that with the public, please. Chief, would you come forth? Davis?
Say one quick.
If you do have any questions for me at any time, I talk to several other commissioners on a frequent basis. Feel free to call me at any time. I'll be more than happy to tell you what I know or don't know and work with you to resolve any resolution that or concern that you have. Because I know I've spoken to the chairman several times here recently and I talked to Mr. Randy, please don't, when you see my name pop up, don't hit mute or straighten the voicemail, he's tired of listening to me, so.
Real quick, you gave us some numbers earlier, Mr. Chairman, forgive me. 470 tested, 368 negative, 102 positive.
Correct.
That's not just through your testing facility, but that's all of Swanee County?
That is all Swanee County, that the tests have come through the state lab and we have results.
Okay, thank you.
And are there any other questions from Ms. Morgan? If not, we would ask to be excused, that we can go meet with a doctor in a nursing home.
Just one quick one. When you said they would go through the state lab, or if you go to your doctor's office and they test, are those coming back through the state lab?
They're going through a private lab and the results get reported through the state database.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Waldron. We're gonna let you be excused at this time. I appreciate you and your staff and if there's anything at all that you run into that you need assistance on, please.
We certainly will. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Chief Davis, welcome.
Yes, sir. How are y'all today?
Doing good.
I have some concerns about the city of Iowa. You've been here several times and I don't know how your calls, your calls have been handled through the city police department on handling, if there's a large crowd gathering or something, have you been receiving any calls?
Yes, sir, we have received several calls, but it's usually out community gatherings at people's residence. We've made several trips to different areas trying to get them to comply with the social distancing rules and suggestions by the governor. So far, none of them has pushed us far enough that we've had to take any further steps and ask them to comply with the governor's order.
Do they disperse when you tell them to leave?
They won't completely disperse, but at least they'll break up into different groups that are 10 or less, so it's actually complying with the request.
Okay. As I said earlier, I had received some calls and I'm quite sure that all the commissioners probably at some point in time, but my main concerns were, I've talked several and when I called Sheriff Sunday night, I was about to get up to go out myself. I was about to get up to go out myself and just ask them to disperse, and he did so kindly. But I feel that the city of Lively has been slighted when it comes to, I said, someone, I said, a official. I called, I mean, our city councilman. Having showed up, had come to any of our meetings. Any meetings being conducted throughout the city that the city's doing? Any meetings?
Yes, sir. Not that I'm aware of, other than their, you know, their emergency council meeting they had a few weeks ago. You know, we're doing the best we can to comply as soon as we get a complaint from somebody in the community to go to try to address any situation. I mean, I don't know what else to tell you other than that. We're trying to make them comply with what the regulations are. And we can't be everywhere at one time and regulate everybody that's out there, but we're doing the best we can to keep it under control and keep it to the best we can.
Okay. City manager still out of town?
Yes, sir, as far as I'm aware.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Anything else for Chief Davis? Thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Chad Crawford, the city of Lively fire chief. Welcome, sir.
The city of Lively Fire Department, we're continuing our mission, answering calls. Myself, a lot of the city departments are doing telephonic conference calls every morning with the EOC. So, as far as the agencies go through the city and the county, I mean, we're pretty much adhering to the same standards, same protocols. We have adopted policies and procedures to adapt to the pandemic. City Hall, they've altered, when you go inside City Hall, you know, they've altered the distancing requirements so that the public can still come in and pay their bills. The staff are obviously wearing the necessary PPE to keep them safe and the public safe. Like I say, we're, the city fire department, the county fire department, the sheriff's department, the police department, again, we're all in sync. We're, a lot of times, you're sitting on a conference call, you don't know who the other department is, but, you know, we're just adapting. As Kerry had said, it's an ever-changing thing. So, if we see something that we can do better, we're adapting to it. We're trying to remain open for business. I know we're doing a lot of virtual-type things, for instance, at a certain nursing facility that's been in the headlines. You know, when they, when all this first started happening, and they started putting up what we call these containment curtains, I was able to do inspections there to make sure they were still complying with the Florida Fire Prevention Code by virtual means, face time, you know, taking pictures. Any way we can limit our contact is what we do. But as far as the fire department, you know, because we don't run a lot of rescue calls, it's been pretty limited for us. But nonetheless, we have upgraded our PPE. We have certain apparatus that we take on call just in case we do get contaminated. It's confined to those personnel and then that piece of equipment. But again, we're in sync. We're in sync. I think, you know, obviously, we could do a better job relaying it to the board of what we're doing, so you guys don't have that type of concern. But I just assure you that we're mirroring, the city is mirroring the county in a lot of matters and situations. Any questions specific to the fire department?
Have some comments for?
No, just, the only comment I have is not direct towards the fire department, but I have had to reach out to the city several times. I've reached out to the police chief and to the mayor. And I will say that every time I've had to reach out to them, they've been over, just been over backward, willing to help and take care of the problems that we had going on in District 3, so I'll just say thank you. And I have no doubt that if I would have needed your help, you'd have done the same thing.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you all.
Yes, sir. And just so I could also, I did speak with our city manager yesterday. He is still out of town. But again, he's very much involved in the processes that we're all going through. If we have questions, comments, concerns, you know, we're reaching out to him, and he's reaching out to us. So, he's, you know, hopefully will be back soon. But again, he's nonetheless, he's still a very big part of what we're doing.
Thank you, Chief Crawford.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
At this time, I ask Ms. Hinkson to come forward.
I didn't mean to leave the EOC out. I just want to, I mean, Sharon has been, has been great in getting the supplies that we need, and the information is just, they've just been doing a phenomenal job. Joyce as well, so I just wanted to thank them. Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Hinkson. I like to bring you up every week. You're like breath of fresh air in here. She's always positive, no matter how bad things are.
I try. I do try. You mentioned PPE equipment. I would like to thank Mr. Jimmy Norris. He was able to reach out to one of, I believe it was Strata Solar was the business, and they actually donated some surgical masks, over 4,000 surgical masks. So, we still have a few left at the EOC. We've been able to distribute those. But the way the PPE works is, in the beginning, the state provided us with a resource request form, and we provide that form to all of the facilities. Gave that to them in the very beginning. And then, they complete that form, and they have to tell us that they have tried to reach out to their providers, and their providers have been unable to provide them with whatever type of equipment it is, whether it be in 95 gloves, gowns, whatever it may be that they need, and they cannot get it. Then they send that form to us, we push it up to the state. It's assigned a mission number, and then the state sends us PPE equipment. The only problem is, when we receive the equipment, it does not have a mission number assigned to it. We just receive a bulk shipment. So then, what we do at the EOC, once we receive it, is we get all of the different requests, and we look at the facilities that need it, and then we divvy it out, if that makes sense. We see, okay, this one needs gowns, this one needs masks, and we try to divvy it out appropriately. Now, we contact the different facilities weekly, sometimes two or three times a week, to make sure that they're okay, they have everything that they need, and if not, we try to fill it the best that we can. We do have a limited supply that we keep there at the EOC, so if they get in a bind, we can pull from that and send it to them. The facility that has had the outbreak, we have sent over two and three times a week. We stay in direct communication with them so that we can make sure that they have the hand sanitizer, they have everything that they need. And they assure us that, you know, they're okay, so.
Thank you so much for your comments. Do I have any questions for Ms. Hinkson?
Just thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Han, you can come forward, please. I've got a word for you. I wanted to see if you could spell it this morning. It's long. I appreciate you. I just wanted to ask you real quick, the facility that we've been discussing, are the calls going smooth there as far as, you know, those folks working with you when you have to go there? I just, if you'd comment on that and kind of start with?
Yes, Chairman Commissioners. We've had, over the past week to 10 days, maybe two weeks, we've had very good communication with the facility. As, you know, we stated, and to start with, we were, you know, we're having a little bit of problem communications, but they have come forth with great communication with us. Everything's going smoothly whenever we do our calls there. You know, they've, they're definitely doing a great job with everything now and making sure that, and they understand what our mission is when we come there and the reasoning behind what we're doing with patient transfers outside and everything. So, over the past couple of weeks, it's done. It's been really good. To give you a little bit of an update on where we're at, we're continuing everything that we've, that we started several weeks ago with our trucks at the McAlpin Station, primarily running most of the COVID calls. If there's, of course, a life or death emergency, we're still sending the closest truck. All trucks have PPE, and everybody is equipped to do what they need to do. We've been fortunate that we've been able to find PPE, and so our levels are at adequate levels for our employees at this time. Got notification from some of the Fire Chief Association emails that I got yesterday, that the state is starting to to limit some of our requests to numbers. You have to send in burn rates now, so if we have to get with Sharon to ask for a mission, we're going to have to show them burn rates and give them figures upfront, and they'll determine on how much they're going to send to us by those burn rates, because I believe there have been some agencies around the state that have asked for more probably than what they need. So, they're requiring that now. But we have, we have been slowing down. We had a week to 10 days, over the past week to 10 days, there have been some days we've had to add some extra, an extra truck on to be able to handle the number of calls that we were primarily taking out of the facility and make sure that we were still adequate to respond to our normal 911 calls within the county. So, we did have to put an extra truck on for a few days, but we've since limited that. We're back down to a normal run load. Everything's been going really well with that. So, we're still doing our social distancing around the station as much as possible. Station life is home life, so it's kind of tough sometimes, but we're doing it the best that we can. The guys are totally cleaning, disinfecting stations every day. We've, we're able to get one of the sprayers from our maintenance department that we were able to spray the trucks down. Of course, it quit working yesterday, so we've adapted a paint sprayer that we picked up from Lowe's, and we're able to spray the trucks down with that now to make sure that we're disinfecting them as good as, you know, as good as we possibly can. A few, a couple of meetings ago, we had spoke about some of the other county departments that were having a problem getting supplies. Adam McCook, our safety officer, and he got a list from all of our department heads and what they were needing. We were able to get some disinfectant and some hand sanitizer and stuff in on our order, plus the EOC has gotten several orders of stuff in that we were able to get distributed out to all the other departments that, for, you know, to cover them with the things that they needed. So, we've still got that, so, you know, any of the department heads that need anything, all they have to do is contact us, and, you know, and they're aware of that. So, everything's been going pretty good. We have had numerous positive transports. So, we're, you know, we're documenting all of that, and so far, you know, we're dealing with it the best we can, but we're getting through it without any issues.
Thank you, sir. Do I have any questions?
I have a question. You're saying that you have a COVID truck just for transport, just that one unit out of the McAlpin area?
We're primarily trying to use those trucks when possible to limit the exposure to the other, to our employees and also to the apparatus. And there are also, there are less people at that station, so if we, we're doing our best to limit the exposure to the number of employees, you know, those guys that work at that station, each shift, are the ones that are primarily transporting these patients that we know have, that we have an issue, you know, a possible issue with. Like I said, it's primarily just a tactic to try to limit the number of employees that are in contact with possible patients, and also the apparatus that we're using, the ambulances, to limit that possible exposure to only those trucks. Now, we've had to run some calls with other trucks due to the fact that it was an emergency situation that could not wait for that truck to come to that call. But if it's, if, when dispatch takes the information, they screen the patients, they talk to them, they find out what's going on, they, you know, they make, you know, they call us with that information, and we can make a determination of whether or not it can wait that extra few minutes for that truck to get there as compared to having to send the closest truck. And if it's a, if we deem it to be an emergency that needs the closest truck, then we're going to send the closest truck. But primarily, we're trying to run them out of that McAlpin Station, yes. Because of it being located in the center of the county, it can go anywhere that it needs.
Well, I know earlier, it was said that, you know, a lot of times, when Mr. Waldron, he was here, he said if you run out in front of a semi and you were positive, tested positive, dare I submit, and I know there's underlying issues that perhaps that, you know, some people just might, but in event that there's an accident and there's a COVID patient, and you are not aware of it, the crew is not aware of it, or go to a house call, or someone fall out, pass out of town, there's no one to say, this individual, how is that handled?
Correct. The way that we're doing all of our calls is when we try to limit the contact with the patient. The paramedic, the driver, the EMT driver is staying outside the home on any call until the paramedic makes an assessment. When they make their assessment, they're staying six feet away. Now, on certain calls that we, you know, you have a vehicle accident with trauma related to injuries, you have a cardiac patient, you know, respiratory patient, any of those, they're wearing a mask on those patients, on those calls, to be on the safe side.
Okay.
Because we don't know. They may be unresponsive from an accident or something like that. They may not wear full, I mean, they wear gloves on every call, so the only thing they're not really wearing is the gown or the pave suit. But they'll put a mask on for that call to make sure that, you know, that they're protected in that instance. It's, that's been the guidance from all the state agencies that we're, we're trying to follow, you know, any guidance that we can get from the Fire Chiefs Association. We have weekly phone conferences, video conferences with every hospital in our surrounding area. I have, I have a day set up that I do one with Lake City Medical Center. I have a day set up that I do one with Shands. We have a day set up that we do one with North Florida Regional. We're in constant phone communication with Shands of Lively, of course. And of course, as Chief Crawford said, the EOC has filled us with information, you know, from the state, and they're doing a phenomenal job keeping all of us informed, along with the health department. I'm on the phone with Mr. Waldron, you know, two to three times a day, and also the EMS coordinators at each of these hospitals or the infection control person, whichever one that each individual hospital uses for communications with us. Anytime there is a positive result that we've transported to a facility, they are getting in touch with us and letting us know so we can document that possible exposure for our employees.
Well, thank you. The comment is, y'all doing a good job at first responder. I know that it's difficult. I know it's hard, it ain't easy, but thank you, and also to Chief Crawford as well. Appreciate the thing that you're doing. Thank you.
One quick question, since you mentioned the hospital, and obviously, there's not a whole lot that we can say or discuss at this time until it changes, but I did want to ask, as far as your relationship with them, is everything, is there anything that's changed? Or is everything going smooth?
Right at this time, everything's going very smooth. I've stayed in contact with, you know, with Rick Nagler, which will be the new CEO when HCA takes over of this facility. And everything is, the communication there has been phenomenal. He assures me that, still, that once everything takes place and he's able to come into the community and actually start communicating with everyone, he will be reaching out to each one of you to talk to you and reassure you of any questions that, you know, you may have, and try to answer those for you. As of this time, it's still planned on being an emergency room only. Other than that, the only information that I've been given is that we had a meeting last week that Sharon put together. last last week that Sharon put together through the EOC and we had both Shands and Live Oak staff and HCA staff on that call. And they assured us that if it's needed for our for a surge plan, if we start having a lot of issues or whatever and this this hospital facility is needed to be used, that they will address that when it when it comes time and that they know they have the facility here to use if if they have to have it.
Thank you, Chief Fan. Appreciate your comments this morning.
At this time, I'll just open the for a little roundtable discussion here with the commissioners and comments, questions, ideas, solutions.
I got a question.
I need a solution.
I thought I'm asking you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Campbell.
I've had several phone calls and I just I think I know the answer, but just seeing if any of y'all have any feedback that I haven't received. Have y'all heard any word or had any discussions with anybody from the state or the governor's office on when there may be a possible reopening of the county or the state?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The short answer is no. But for additional information, there was a conference call yesterday. In fact, I called and I was thinking about that earlier because I couldn't participate in it. And it was supposed to be for the purpose of discussing reopening everything in the state. The short version is that apparently there were a bunch of committee heads and bureaucrats that just talked for 20 minutes about what they had been doing. Nothing meaningful became of that. If there is a meaningful conversation about that, I'll make sure and share that with you. But to date, it hasn't occurred.
And then the other thing I wanted to talk about is it kind of seems petty to bring it up in the middle of all the other discussion we have, but nevertheless, we still got business we have to tend to. Last Wednesday, we had a census meeting where Jimmy Norris had kind of give us an update at that census meeting on where we're at within the county compared to the rest of the state. And I was going to ask him to update y'all because our numbers are going down. This census is is critical to the county over the next 10 years. And so I just.
Mr. Norris, can you please come up to the front?
Him to give us a quick update and then ask y'all if y'all have any possible ideas on a way to reach out, connect the community to try to get everybody to participate. Because if we get left behind on it, we're left behind for 10 years.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that we have Mr. Norris get one of those census jumpsuits with strobe lights on it, have him stand on the street corner.
Well, I have done one. First of all, we can make sure if you want a suggestion that we've all done it.
Well, I feel mine out.
So, yeah, and I wouldn't call you out. I would never do that. You got the camera ready, Logan? Got them all. But I know last time that pretty much everybody in here's done it. We did meet last Wednesday and just so you know, that's on Zoom, not in person. I think we were about 15 people on that call. And and I do have the numbers. I I receive a report every week. And basically, what it tells us, just so I don't have to read through day after day after day, is when we started off, we started off really strong. And actually, and Ms. Jennifer Powell, who is, you know, our assistant from the Census Bureau, she called me and she said, when we started off, we were number one in her district. And she was very surprised by that because her district actually encompasses like St. John's County and Clay County and a lot of, you know, bigger communities. But what we've seen and every community has seen this is that while we started off very strong and then there were days where we had 4% participation rate and then it would drop to 3%, 2 then 1. Over the last several weeks, we've started, we've dropped down below 1% a day. So now what we're seeing is we went from 0.7 to 0.5. Even we have, yesterday, we were at 0.1. There was a day last week, we were at 0. We averaged for last week 0.3%. So if you take 0.3% and multiply that out to get to the 70 where we previously were, it's going to take a year and a half to get there. Well, we don't have that long. So and 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 it's it's not just us, you know, we we get the information. I've requested the information from all of the counties that are in her her purview. And and they're pretty much all tracking the same way. It's just the times we're at, you know, we 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 can't meet, we can't go out and talk to people. The great plans that we had for this very facility and being here during the fair, the festivals we were going to participate in, and this is for everybody. Now, there will be some states, like you guys were just talking about reopening, some states are going to beat to the punch on that, I think. And so some of the areas that aren't able to reopen and to start working this a little harder are going to have a little more opportunity to to do things. The, you know, we we've inquired of our committee, as you know, and a lot of these guys are in here, and I appreciate you guys very much to come up with new and different ways. And and we've done everything, you know, from from phone calls and reaching out to our churches to newsletters. A good example of how things can work, and I don't know if I mentioned this last time, was that the there's 11 census tracts in Swanee County. And I get a report weekly that tells me who is participating and what that percentage is. Two weeks ago, the Dialing Park Census Track, to to kind of use that, was the lowest reporting track in the county. We we were able to get with Mr. Carter. We put a letter, article in the newsletter. I went down to the library and put one of the big census flags up that we got. He made some comments. We did some Facebook posts targeting that area. Now, they've moved up from the lowest till they're like fifth. Now, the Branford area is the lowest. So, you know, and that's a moving target because when we build up one area, we go targeted, obviously somebody else has got to fall to the bottom of the list. So that, you know, that that we can track and we can kind of tell who's lagging behind. The the greatest participation rate we're seeing is right here in kind of Live Oak itself. That that rate is actually up around 56%, I think. As a total county right now, we're at 44. So we were at 70 10 years ago at the last census.
So basically, just to help you kind of sum this up, you're you're standing there wanting the board to figure out how to help you get your percentage up?
Well, you know, just like with anybody else, if if there are ideas or or ways that that we can do things together, you know, certainly we're we're open to that.
Do you have any additional ideas that you would like to share?
Well, you know, some of the things, I tell you some of the things that we're implementing right this second is just like, and I don't know if they're going to speak to the food drive that's going to be here tomorrow. We're, you know, looking for some folks to help us. We're going to be distributing census stuff within, you know, the confinement of those bags that are going out. Chris is working on right now on the rack cards that we had. Initially, what they have is the government site to actually go to and do the census and fill it out. So what we did is we've made labels now that have a local phone number, which is basically my phone number, because the mayor, I think, is sitting in the back. He had some conversations with some folks who felt very much like if they had a local number to call, maybe we could encourage some people to do that. So that's one of the things that we're going to do tomorrow. If anyone wants to volunteer to help with that, we're open to that. The mayor's also reached out to a lot of our, like our apartments, things, rental spaces, and we're doing the same same thing there. A lot of the owners of those facilities. At this point, it's kind of manpower because some of the people in our committee can't get out. Some of them are older and they don't want to be out. A lot of them are not able to come and show up. So, you know, we've thought of some creative ways, but it's just kind of, I mean, if we have to, we'll take the phone book and call everybody in the phone book. I mean, we've got we've got to just go about it a different way than than our original plan.
I know it's it's really tough because before all this happened with the COVID, we was jumping up and down and everybody was really excited. I mean, we had board meetings and discussing it there about how important it was and allocating funds to where you could get what you needed. And and now all of a sudden, it's just, it's not even in the backseat, it's in the trunk. It's not important anymore. But it is important.
It will be very important as we come out of this. But we get next year, 2021, in the next 10 years.
And Mr. Chairman, that's he's saying exactly what I wanted to mention. It's not petty, honestly. This is huge. I mean, people don't understand, this is federal funds that come directly to our community for the next 10 years. And I'm sure, just like you, other commissioners, like myself, have already received emails from our state legislators and congressmen that funds are being cut.
Okay, cut.
As we speak already, things that were projected to come are not going to be here. So it is very important.
So many of the services that, you know, you were bringing all these guys up to give reports, so many of those services will be affected.
Absolutely.
By what this census says.
Well, it's not just funds. You're looking at the commission districts, the representative districts, the Senate.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
The federal representation.
Yes.
I mean, if you have low numbers across all these counties up here in North Florida, you're looking at completely changing the the districts. And we're already in an uphill battle.
And I don't, again, I don't want to be all doom and gloom.
I'm not either, but I'm just saying that if we don't come up with a way to at least break even to what we did 10 years ago, then we're falling behind.
Yeah, we we and and if you look at all the surrounding counties and where we are, we're we're all running kind of similar. But everybody is struggling, you know, everybody's just struggling. I know the the Census Bureau has asked to move the timeline back a little bit for reporting, but.
Which is, what is the timeline now?
The timeline now is August the 15th, I think, is the final date of reporting. However, just working with Ms. Jennifer, when you look at it, it, just like what our chart is showing, we're tapering off. We really feel like the earlier we can work it and the harder we can work it, the better we have to get results. As our community starts opening back up and we start going back into the kind of normal operations, it's almost like we feel like we're going to become less important. We have a little bit of an audience now that are confined in certain areas that can help us. But if we are able to lift some of these restrictions, I don't, you know, I think people are just going to kind of put this on the back burner. So we feel it's very important to be aggressive now.
So what you're seeing right now is, or what you're saying is basically the only way we have to talk with folks is by telephone. That's the only way we have to get a hold of them.
Telephone and, of course, the Zoom that we do when we have our meetings.
So the next thing you're saying is the only way to do that is through manpower because one person can't call 50,000 people.
That's 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 true. And a lot of our committee members are working hard. And again, a lot of them are in here. But the mayor's got another job, too. And I wear him out. He's been he's been great. Mr. Scott's in here. Who else is in here on that committee? Ms. Betty's on that committee. There's there's a lot of them in here that that are helping, but they all have jobs, you know, so they're doing what they can to help us.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
A suggestion was made to me this week about some of our furlough workers. And and I would be interested in hearing the hearing the thoughts of the board about possibly even putting some of these folks back to work and making phone calls. Because last week, we talked about this, that you're not sure how many phone calls from volunteers are being made, how much engagement your volunteers actually have. But if we have folks that are actually getting paid, I mean, that's an investment that we have to make in our own county.
Oh, I agree with that. Jimmy, you mentioned the library a while ago when you guys were utilizing that. Was that a spike upward?
Well, we never got there. Ms. Betty is is obviously a part of that team. And the when when Ms. Jennifer came and we set up our plan for moving forward, she identified, you know, several target areas that we had to have on this committee. The library was at the top of the list because people could come in and maybe they don't have access to a computer or technology. They could come in and Ms. Betty had agreed that some of her staff would be able to work with them to answer questions or to put them at ease. And it was a public place where, you know, everyone was welcome. And so that was a big part of our plan moving forward and using all of the libraries. Well, you know, obviously things happened and that shut down. So we never got to move forward. And actually, you know, if I receive a call and someone says, I want to do this, but I need some assistance, we could direct them to the library. But that fell through. So we, you know, we kind of lost that option. We actually have someone on our committee, well, I probably shouldn't mention the name, but she is talking to people in her area and allowing them to come into her office and taking the information and helping them go online to sign up for the census because they're a little, you know, with the federal government, some people are nervous about feeling this form now. So she is a very respected person in the community. But some of these people just don't have access to the technology. They don't have a computer or they're nervous about doing it. So she is able to go in and actually literally help these people sign up.
See, you almost answered my next question. If if we had a volunteer or library aide or someone like that that was making those phone calls and gathering that information, are they allowed to enter that for them?
You, the way it works is you are supposed to enter the information yourself. However, I can have someone here who can help me understand the questions or guide them through the process. They don't want one person just sitting here taking information while someone is telling them. But we are allowed.
They do that in California, Mr. Norris. They just sign everybody up.
Boy, this sign was giving me a headache. Yeah.
That's how their council, how you're insinuating?
Yeah, California does it that way.
Listen, I'm all for whatever we have to do to get people to fill those things out. I I think both these commissioners said it's it's very important to our community.
It will be. And listen, I know where we are right now. Ms. Joyce and Ms. Sharon, I'm pretty sure that.
Can I ask a question real quick? Couple of questions that I thought of. Jimmy, are they still mailing these things out?
They, good, good, good question. Actually, on the 16th of April, if you have not filled it out by that point in time, they are going to be doing a second mail out. So if you haven't filled it out, you should be any day now receiving a letter in the mail again saying, will you please do your census? And that would be the second attempt. Now, that will be the last mail out. And then it's strictly on us. After that point, they're not sure yet if they're going to be able to send out a numberers because of, first of all, if people are going to allow them to come to their homes, is it going to be safe? Or are we going to have enough people volunteer or, well, get paid to go around and knock on doors and follow up? So we we know right now that's a concern as if we're going to have that.
Let me let me interject real quick. I want to, anyone that's here that has important business, I need to tend to. I don't want you to feel like you have to be here. Everybody's welcome. And I want everyone to stay. But we're going to take a five minute recess real quick. This is very important. I think we're going to need to talk about it. So I don't want to rush through this to try to get done. But let's take a five minute recess for a bathroom break. We'll come right back to it and we'll pick right back up in the sinks. And I saw you want to speak. But it's important and we need to get this, we need to hammer some things out right here.
I was just going to let you know that we do have our alert Swanee, which is our notification system, that we can send a mass notification out to everybody in the county. It can be used to send a whatever message we want to get out. And it'll reach their cell phones. It's what comes out with the weather alerts, but we can type in something and send that out as well.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Appreciate that idea. That's that's what having a roundtable discussion is about. Got to get creative. Come on, Mr. Norris.
So I'm not sure where we were.
I think Commissioner Hale was about to speak about something when I cut him off. Did you have a question or comment?
I do, but go ahead real quick. Well, no, no, we and and again, I appreciate, you know, Ms. Sharon for that. And and I do know, you know, these, just like these issues that we're dealing with, you know, my wife is an administrator of multiple buildings. And so I know how important this issue is. this issue is. They're coronavirus and, and these, all of these guys work with her and do an excellent job. I think she came to social share yesterday and picked up some supplies. And if she doesn't go see her, they call her. My father-in-law's in the nursing home out here. So I'm not, want to make light of us working on the census amid, you know, amidst everything else that's going on, but we do know this is very important and we can make a huge difference. It'll give us some positive work on, combine our efforts together and come out the other side of this thing for the next 10 years. And, um, anything we can do, we're willing to do. We just had a couple of great conversations, six feet apart, on some ideas.
Okay.
So if you guys have anything, uh, I...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You know, we're sitting here talking about it and I know you said the library was a big, without having the churches and the schools and the other tools that you were going to use, you never got a chance to launch the library. Uh, with that being said, you're talking about making phone calls.
Mm-hmm.
How many, I'm not holding you to it, but I mean, one person, 10 people, 20 people to get on the phone every day? I mean, how many people could they reach potentially?
Well, we, Ms. Jennifer and I, um, we've been working on a plan since all this happened on how we were going to do some outreach. And, and of course, like I say, the mayor's been instrumental in helping us on some of these. Um, the faith-based community, we know is a big, a big area and, and reaching out to our churches, but they're not meeting. So what we're trying to do is literally make phone calls to them, make phone calls to their leaders, um, the business community, you know, some of these guys that are up and running. Like I went down to meet Ms. Laura at the Filling Fork and she agreed that she would put these rack carts in people's bags whenever they came and, and had a takeout meal. Uh, if we could reach out to all of those businesses that are doing that, they could drop, you know, and, and I'm not evading the phone call issue, but these are things kind of in front of that. Um, our, our banks, we're working with our banks, but we constantly calling the banks, are you doing this? The managers, are you doing it? Do you need more supplies? Uh, of course, the school buses and, and, and I don't know if we're going to be able to get anything back into the school or not. We did one round all the way through, but that was 3,000 pieces that we delivered through, through the school buses. Our daycares, uh, of course, media, our migrant community, immigrants, and then philanthropic organizations. And then we get to, the last thing was phone calls. So these are all pieces that we're identifying and we're targeting and we need people to help work in those areas. But then as the last thing, it was like, well, if we've done all this and we're still lagging, we can take the phone book and we can start calling people. Now, yeah, a lot of people have cell phones, but a lot of them still have a home phone. Um, there's 45,000 people in Swanee County. Is it worth it to sit down and to make all those phone calls? You know, maybe, how many points can we pick up? Um, so that, that's on our list. It was kind of the last piece, but as we work our way through all these pieces, um, I don't know, somebody call 100 people a day? I mean, if it, I don't know if you say five minutes a phone call times...
Mr. Chairman, let me help out. We've got people that we can bring in and make this happen. And that's the answer to the question. We, we took, we brought three people in to help with some paperwork that we needed help with in the administration office that are going to be working with their computers to do that. But the reality is, we can take the phone book, just divide it up amongst a dozen people, if that's what it takes in order to get it done. Now, I recognize that only five people in the county still have landlines, but, but we'll do the best that we can. Um, no, the truth is, we, we just need to do it.
We do.
We just need to try it and if, if it isn't 50% effective, that's okay. We're still going to have results, alright? And we've got people that can do this. We can figure out how to, uh, give them a list of people to call and make them responsible for it and just do the check-off list and call every one of them that we can call and the amount of time that we have left.
What we had talked about was, uh, sorry to, if I cut you off, when, when we were looking at doing it with, with Jennifer was actually, we were going to have a spreadsheet that, you know, the name and we either got a, a voicemail or a live person, have you completed or not completed? Um, if so, check it off. If not, how can we help? Can we set up a time to assist you to come do it on a computer? I don't know if that's an option we could still do or not on an appointment basis.
We set up a time and just send Mr. Harris to their house.
Well, you know, that's the way they used to do it in the old days.
He's got plenty of time.
Take, take the bag or, you know, here's a phone number that you can call or, you know, how can we, how can we help? And then we would know the ones that we missed and if we did get called up, we could go back to them. But it, we were, we were going to try to track it, is what we were doing and then that would help us kind of have some accountability on, when we're going through the whole process. So it's kind of how we were looking at it.
One of the questions about the mailing, uh, question that I asked was with, could they fill this thing out by mail and then mail it back? Um, see, my thought was if we call people, if we have people that can make the phone call and get someone to respond that, yes, I will fill that out. If we could then handle that mailing and mail it to those people who have said, yes, we'll fill, fill it out, that might be more effective than just doing a mass mailing and not having that personal contact by telephone. But it's something that we'd have to coordinate, try to make it happen pretty quick.
Yeah, all of those mailings, they went, round one went out in the middle of March and they've given it about a month to take place and now round two comes out and that's from the federal government. And the, not everybody will get it, you know, if you've already completed it, you should not get it this second time. It should strictly be if you have not completed the census. Now saying that, you can go online any day of your life, anytime, 24 hours a day.
Fill it out online.
And fill it out. We're about 17% of online right now. Again, like I mentioned before, I think St. John's County is up over 50%, 53% or something. So for whatever reason, we're not, our community is not liking doing it online as well as a lot of other communities, but that option is there. There's also a phone number.
But, but with that being said, with what Mr. Harris is saying about mailing it out, if you are able to get a hold of them on the telephone right now, then that mailer's coming back to them. They're getting a second round there that they can say, hey, you're fixing to get another one.
Right.
Please make sure that we wouldn't even have to send it out at that point.
And if you need assistance.
Yes. The 16th of April was when we were told they were dropping them in the mail.
And then, you know, at that point, do we try to get a hold of everybody we can and we see what we get filled out and what comes back and then we do another round of calls? You know, following up with another round?
Yeah, it's, we've, we've, we've got the low hanging fruit. You know, we, those people have already done it. Now it's the tough times. Now it's the people that are going to take a little encouragement to do it, you know, it's the people that maybe are a little distrusting that we need to do it. They've got to understand it's very important, completely confidential. We're just, all of these services that we were talking about, I mean, that, that's where this money's going to affect, I mean, the health department, Mr. Waldron's sitting right here. That's a huge deal for him. And moving forward, I'm thinking he's going to need all the help he can get. So any, any suggestions that you guys have, we're more than willing to, to work with anyone to do anything. I don't know if, if there's a way, if people just need help, that we can meet with them on a, you know, by appointment basis to help someone out. I don't know how many people would be willing to do that. That was some of our first intent, was to allow people to come in and work with them. So, but there, there, there's a lot of things we can do.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Harris, would you have time that you could spend an hour or so, Mr. Norris, before next week's meeting and, and hash out a little game plan?
We'll do it.
And next meeting we come in and we'll have firm, I mean, maybe you already be started, some of what he's, what y'all can come together with. And I mean, if you've got a question for us also, but I'm saying, I think Mr. Harris has some ideas there that, and with your ideas, we can come together and, uh, and get something going fast and furious. Commissioner Gammel?
Just a comment. Um, I know we talked about the furloughed workers. I think there's 37 of them total with the libraries. What if we, I, I don't know if you make it optional to, you may have some that don't, that, that aren't wanting to come in due to age or health or whatever concerns they may have, but that we, we give them the opportunity to come back and, and, and make the phone calls.
Volunteer?
As a volunteer, but, but back on the payroll. Um, and I don't know if it's possible, um, but if, if, if they were going to be doing that at whatever location, whether it be the library or, or where, maybe one in Brantford, one in Live Oak, that we have one computer set up at the, close to the door, that by appointment only, if somebody doesn't have access to it, that they could come to the, um, come there and then once they leave, everything could be sanitized. I was just thought, throwing it out there for feedback.
Or that person that can answer the phone or call them on the phone and have that computer in front of them to help walk them through it on their end. I think that's where a lot of people get, that's why that's down. It can get confusing. I've seen it.
There's, I think there's multiple ways. I mean, some people may want to have someone to sit down and help them. Some people we make and just administer over the phone. Some people we're just going to, when we call them, we're going to encourage them to fill out the paper form that's already in front of them. So I, you know, plus the other seven or eight areas that we're trying to concentrate on, we'll take, um, let's say they're ambassadors, you know, we, we can call these, you know, they're ambassadors or we can make them a part of our committee, our CCC committee. But I don't think one size is going to fit all, but I think if we put all of these pieces together, a lot of it will stem from the phone calls. And then the other categories, if we have people that want to do it, we can assign them to, like, hey, you're my bank's person. I need you calling every one of these banks every day or asking them and seeing what new information they need so they can be passing it out through those, those drive-throughs. So there's, there's several avenues of, that we can, we can use to help.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If, uh, Commissioner Gammel was saying, if you call the furlough workers back, would that, that put them back on their annual leave and their sick leave time with that?
Start that? They would be paid, they'd get a paycheck. They would, yes.
They wouldn't, their time wouldn't start back as far as?
Their, their time would start back as, as a paid employee rather than being furloughed.
Okay.
Yeah, they wouldn't be a furloughed employee.
Okay.
Put them back to work.
If those employ, if those employees could bring that number from 40 something, is that what you said, 44%?
44 as of, now, now again, like, just like these other resorts, we're a few days behind.
Okay, but we were at 70% last time.
We were at 70% in 2010.
That's a lot of ground to make up and that's...
Yeah, it is and we, we, again, not to...
And the find, the point, the place we're going to find ourselves in is if they don't do the door-to-door as they have done in years past, we're stuck with online and through the mail, may be what we're stuck with.
The, the exact numbers in 2010, we had 57% actual, what they call self-reporting and that's the 44% number we're at now. The 13% difference was from the enumerators that went door-to-door and had forms filled out and helped people fill those forms out. We don't even know if that's going to happen now. So not only are we struggling to get back on self-reporting, we may have to literally make up what those people that went door-to-door did in 2010. That is the scary part because that's going to be very difficult to do, very difficult.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, Mr. Norris, is there, obviously I, I have to assume that the US Census Bureau is the one who, who basically pulled the plug on door-to-door at this point, right? Or is that local?
Yes, they, they have suspended, they have suspended, um...
Is there any way to change the, uh, obviously if we're dealing with phone numbers that are not listed because people have dropped their landlines, uh, and we don't have access to any, we, I'm, I'm sure we can get, uh, some of our, our, like, possibly the, uh, the voter's office together, try to figure out, we can get, um, access to whatever numbers that they've placed in their, uh, in, in any of their information, public information, uh, like voter's list or, or such like that. I'm just trying to figure out something, but there are going to be a large number of people that we don't have access to without actually going to their address. So my question is, is there any way that we can go and drop simply a, a door hanger on their door without even, no contact, just put a door hanger on the door and walk away reminding them that they need to get this census information put out? I would be willing to, if we can't do that, I would be willing to even entertain a, a possibility of the county, um, investing in some mailers to simply remind people. They may not want to open the US Census, a US Census, uh, information envelope or the information they sent out, but they may be willing to open something from the county. I'm just trying to figure out anything that we can do, um, that, that we can help.
We haven't, we haven't looked at going door-to-door, uh, just because the federal government is always taking care of that piece and we haven't had those discussions in our meetings about, about going door-to-door. Um, I mean, I guess we can try anything if the county wants to try it.
Right now during this time, I don't think we need to be sending them door-to-door.
Well, this is, all I'm saying is, is this is our investment. This is the investment that we may make, need to make into our county and just like being willing to put some people back to work in order to do this, um, I'm going to at least look at all options. If you take an option off the table without even considering it, then it's, then...
No, no, I mean, I considered it, I just, um...
I would, I would interrupt, I would agree with a mailer maybe from the county because someone may be more apt to open that than, than that, but maybe with the information of if you need help, call this number.
One thing we would like to do is if, if we do decide to kind of go in the direction of getting some help and making it aggressive, you know, people are scared of fraud and, and phone calls and a lot of times they don't trust. So we would want to possibly put, put an announcement on the radio or maybe even the newspaper saying locally, you will, you know, you will see, uh, that we are working on this and this is legitimate and so please, you know, don't be afraid and be able to identify ourselves as I'm such and such and I work with, you know, the Swanee County Complete Count Committee or I work with Economic Development or I work with the library. So people know we're real and we're not, you know, we're not trying to take advantage. I think that's going to be one of the keys is getting past people being skeptical that it is a real contact. But we have to do something and we've been working really hard on this. And since we can't go out and we can't go to the fair and hand out 3,000 pieces of material and talk, I mean, we, we had the Census Bureau bringing people, working people from the Census Bureau to be here manning booths to sign people up while they're here. You know, so, and again, the whole world, country, you know, they're dealing with the same thing. They lost the ability to do this. We just don't want to sit stagnant and say, well, our hands are tied. We just want to be aggressive and while we can work it, work it.
Fair enough.
I agree.
I, uh, I say we just, number one, we start with a meeting and get some ideas.
We'll, we'll talk about it.
Implement it.
So we can come up with. And we, we could still order that jumpsuit for you with the strobe lights, but on street point.
Yeah, that does work.
In my former life, when, over at the chamber, we did make a few videos over there and it has been suggested, the problem is, is the social distancing, but it has been suggested if we could do a series of some little videos that, because some of those things, we could get five, six, 7,000. So if we, we make it creative, if we could get the mayor back here or the sheriff or whoever's, you know, interested and...
I think we just need to get the young kids to do a TikTok. That seems to be the...
Here comes the clown, I mean, Mr. Scott.
You know, in Columbia County, the chairman did a thing on the radio, make sure that jumpsuit will fit the chairman also.
That's in Columbia County. What you're saying is get a jumpsuit for the chairman of the Columbia County Board, is that right?
But yeah, I mean, we...
Mr. Scott, I don't know if anybody called you to the microphone.
Hey, listen, Mr. Scott helped me load, uh, all of those school buses with those, uh, 3,000 items that we, that we had delivered. So, uh, again, you got great folks here willing to do whatever they can to help.
Okay. Any other comments from Mr. Norris?
Um, would y'all be, I, I know, I know y'all wanting them to put a plan together, but is there anything that y'all be willing to do today to go ahead so that if y'all put something together over the next couple of days, that they can move forward with it instead of...
Well, that would be my next question. How, how fast could we put that together? You know, I guess, kind of putting that on your shoulders, Mr. Norris, you're kind of the lead liaison here.
Well, I mean, at least initially, if you just... Well, I mean, at least initially, if you just want to get the ball rolling, that can happen quickly. I mean, it would be really simple to, you know, create the form that we were talking about doing and assign, let's say if we were going to start making calls, it'd be really simple to say, I don't know if you got, I don't know what, four or five people, ten people, I don't know how many we'll have, but to assign that immediately, that could get, that could go to work immediately. As far as some of these other programs and identifying where we're going to go and working with our businesses and our restaurants and our banks, those can be things that evolve and maybe we pull somebody to, to help concentrate in those areas. But I, I think it can happen pretty quickly as, as far as I'm concerned.
I mean, I think what has been kind of suggested here with the furlough employees, I think the first thing will be reaching out to them and finding out how many would be willing. Because I think you're right, there may be some that's going to say, hey, I'm, I'm of age or just a, a.
I think someone's made.
Being safe, I'm going to stay here. And there may be others that's willing to jump in. We need to know what that count is, I guess.
Yeah, obviously. And when, when we, when we know that or if we decide if we have people, we would want to set up some type of a, you know, a conference call or Zoom meeting or something and get Jennifer to come back in and, and let's educate just a little bit, you know, a, a really quick, this is the reason why this is what we're doing and this is why it's important to our community. Uh, we don't want them just going out completely blind, but you know, get them up to speed. And I think we could do that and, you know, an hour or two, um, and then, then we could turn them loose. So, and again, I don't, I don't know if we're talking about one person or.
Yeah.
We can figure that out. We can figure that part out.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Lawrence, I think's got something she wants to add.
Sir? I said, I've seen Ms. Lawrence wave.
Ms. Berry, welcome this morning.
I just wanted to, um, you probably just answered some of my questions, uh, the training part of it. And, uh, also you mentioned the, um, I don't want to call them workstations, but the places where this would take place. Just want to remind you that I have one of the largest buildings in this county and the largest building in terms of public space. So there is the opportunity to, um, more, more than adequately do the separation, um, in terms of what you need and we could set those up in the library. Now I'm going to be selfish a little bit, uh, because I just had fifteen boxes of books delivered yesterday. And what I would like to know is if, um, and when you do decide to have, um, this, uh, process set up, if I might be able to borrow them every now and then to help get those books processed and catalogued and ready for when the public does come back because that's going to be an awesome job. We're now looking at having to be closed even after the permission of opening just to get ready, um, to resume business. So would it be okay when you make this decision, if possible, for me to use a part of that time to, um, begin to catch up?
I don't see a problem with that.
We, we can figure that one out. We'll get it done.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
While Ms. Berry's up here, I was going to ask this later on. It doesn't really have to deal with this, but it does have to deal with the library. Uh, I haven't received any calls locally, but I have received a few phone calls from our other counties, Hamilton and Madison. Uh, and I don't know, it was brought to my attention, I don't know if anyone else knows this, but had a, an employee call, had several parents call, uh, and I had another county commissioner from another, uh, from Madison County call. With the virtual learning being extended through the end of the school year, obviously, uh, it was brought to my attention. I don't know if it was happening here, but I know it was in Madison County and, and one in Hamilton County. Uh, for the children, the families that didn't have internet access, obviously they were using the library.
Yes.
But they were using it in a capacity, I, I, that was brought to my attention is they weren't actually going in, but they were able to get their lessons sent there, print it out, pick it up, do the work, return it back. And I'm, I'm assuming they were scanning it back in and send it back to that teacher. Uh, are you aware of that? Is that some of the things that were going on?
Um, that was prior to, I guess, the furlough because that's not, uh, and you're probably talking about a lot of our homeschool. We, we do have a really large homeschool, uh, population in all three of the counties. Hamilton County was the most, um, the one that was the most visible in terms of use from me because they used both places. But, um, that was a normal kind of thing. So I'm not real sure that, that.
It just, these, these parents that reached out were struggling trying to make sure their children were getting information to them.
Right, right. Well, a lot of them don't have internet access and, um, so that was one, that was a part of what they did when they came to the library.
Okay.
I did not get that call myself yet, um, but it stands to reason because that is an, a service that was provided also.
And the reason why I think I mentioned is, is like you said, you have other needs with books coming in. We need the census count to go up and, and if this would still be a possibility for those students.
One of the things that we did in anticipation for this was because we have Wi-Fi and we also have laptops that we can allow to be used on the premises or, um, in the library. And, um, we added outside benches, um, to the library so that when someone needed to use a computer rather than coming in the library, we have lock cases that locks a laptop to a bench outside. And then we allowed that, we would allow them to use the laptop and the benches are, um, are apart so that it would just be one per bench or whatever. Uh, that was just an idea or a plan that we had. We never really implemented it. But I was thinking about that when, um, Jimmy was talking about the use of the computers and what it would do with regards to the census. Now, having said that, um, and these are just thoughts in my head, um, the computers in the library, the way that they, they're set up now, we have banks of laptops so that we can put a computer and computer use anyplace in that building. Uh, what we did for the staff, uh, before they left was that we placed them in meeting rooms, um, three or four in the meeting room, um, and the open spaces, um, we had them at tables. So I'm just babbling all this to say there are options. So just let me know what you want to do.
Thank you so much for your comments, Ms. Lawrence. Berry, do you have a comment?
And just so y'all know, um, when I say I think there's thirty-seven employees, those are the three libraries in Swanee County. That was, I didn't take into consideration the region. Welcome, Mr. Buck. I believe.
If it's all right, I was just going to say it's coming up on, on the, uh, on budget season. It's where that the county will already be sending, sending out trim notices, uh, to property owners. If we could limit that to homesteads and stuff, it's where that, that could also be a resource and it wouldn't cost you a, uh, there's, it would be no additional postage required. So, so if you look at that, I, I don't know if the property operator's office has a way of, of taking and, and, and putting a limit on, on the homesteads only, but it could be a resource also. So.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Norris, you got any closing comments on the situation? Thank you for your time this morning.
No, I appreciate you guys. I know it's tough times, but, uh, we're trying to stay positive, do what we can. And, uh, we're open to any and everything. And, and again, if we're able to work with Ms. Berry and her staff, she's, she's been a part of the census from the beginning. So she's, she's up to speed. We just have to get the others up to speed that were helping us, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more comments on this matter? At this time, moving right along, do I have any comments from the public? Anyone wishing to speak? Any other department heads wishing to speak this morning? Hearing none, we'll go into closing comments. Mr. Pravat, you have anything for us?
Do you really want your lawyer to talk?
Well.
Well, then I'll avoid it.
Thank you for that. Mr. Harris?
Uh, just briefly, we spent a great deal of time talking about this COVID earlier. Um, one thing that I would like to say is that I am very encouraged in the change in the number of cases that we have had. You know, I'm not bringing that sheet to the meetings any longer, but I can tell you that if we had continued doubling every two days the way that we were, our numbers would be much greater than they are today. Um, so I'm very encouraged by that. I don't want anyone to back off being careful, but, uh, Commissioner Hale has his list over there. But the reality is we'd be, we just have a whole lot more cases. Um, and I'm thankful that we don't have more of them out here in the general public at large. Uh, that's encouraging as well. Um, I wanted to just report to you that we've got a response back on our, uh, request for pre-approval for non-congregent housing if we needed it. Uh, for example, for first responders or those that might need that. So that if they were tested positive and, uh, either didn't want to or couldn't go home and, uh, run the risk of having their families be infected, we could use that non-congregent housing. We did get the approval. We haven't gotten the letter back yet, but I know that we've been approved for that. That's all I have.
Anything, uh, just a second, Commissioner Richardson. Uh, Mr. Mayor, will you make your way to the front and we'll have you close this in prayer in just a second. Uh, Commissioner Richardson, closing comments.
I just, on the heels of, um, what, uh, Ms. Harris said, that, um, we are doing pretty good. Uh, I, I watched the YouTube video from the governor yesterday and, uh, I think he put it in perspective as far as where we're at as a state. Um, and, you know, a lot of folks out there said that we would be a lot higher than we are. And, uh, I think all of this has to do with the response of not just, uh, our county, but every county in the state, every, uh, every municipality that's been affected by this and the public at large in taking it seriously. And so I do appreciate everyone who's, uh, put forth an effort to, uh, make this thing minimize of the effects of this virus. And I look forward to reopening and getting back to work.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Fleming?
Mr. Chairman, I'll be brief. Uh, I support Mr. Richardson, Commissioner Richardson's idea of, of the mask. I have mine, don't have it on, but if this thing gets a little worse, I, you got my vote that we start wearing gloves and masks. But, uh, on tomorrow, there's a Farm Share free food giveaway here at Exhibition One.
Yes, sir.
Uh, there's a lady here to, today that, uh, know a whole lot, a whole lot more about than I do. I'm going to ask her if she would, uh, come up here. Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, Ms. Davis, Ford Davis, would you come to the podium and?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. Welcome, Ms. Berry.
Tomorrow at, um, eight to, no, ten to one o'clock, uh, there'll be a Farm Share giveaway, uh, back here in the back. And I just want to thank, uh, Commissioner Fleming for helping organize this and kind of allowing me to take the, the rim and just run with it. I brought the idea to him that I felt like that was a need here in Swanee County. Uh, just from my observation, my husband, we noticed that we're not seeing as many people in the grocery stores. They don't have the money to go to grocery stores. You have the kids who are getting dropped off food, but then what about the rest of their families? Okay? So, um, did some research about Farm Share, which, uh, is an organization, uh, that's equal opportunity that was formed in nineteen ninety-one, that comes to communities and, uh, provide food, free food. They bring in these big box trucks or tractor trailers. Uh, if you probably look at the news, there's one going on as we speak in Broward County right now. Uh, they've gone on in Jacksonville, um, Tallahassee, Quincy, all of those areas and all around the state. So I just made a phone call to them and asked, could I get on the calendar? Can we, can Live Oak? Uh, it's equal opportunity. Um, I was referred to Mr. Scott, uh, Parks and Recreation. They have been wonderful. Uh, we're going to have volunteers from CERT, um, the census, uh, people, representatives from the census is going to be there. So that is, as I listen to you all talk about the census, there are going to be some representatives there to put information about the census in the bags also. I can't tell you how many people they can feed. Um, I know in Jacksonville, they had enough food for two thousand families. Tallahassee, one of them, they had enough food for seven hundred families. So I have been in communication with them, letting them know this is entire community, community that's in need and not just a church or not just a district. It's everybody's in need. Um, even people who can come from another county. You know, we're not looking at license plates or anything. It's anybody in need. Yesterday, when we were there setting up with Mr. Scott yesterday, a gentleman came by. He thought it was yesterday. So it's not socioeconomic. It's just anybody who gets in line and we get the food out and, and I can't, I don't even know what they're giving out. You've seen on the news where they're dumping vegetables and milk on the ground because of surplus. We're hoping we can get some of that stuff also to give to the citizens in this area.
Thank you so much for your comments. But before you leave, uh, I just got in trouble in the principal's office. I need, I didn't ask you to give your, your name and address for the record.
My name is Monica Ford Davis, seven 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 one eighty-six Road.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful day. Anything else, Commissioner Fleming?
No, sir.
Commissioner Gamble, closing comments.
I don't have anything, um, except, uh, I know there's one individual here that wanted to speak in the back and I think they might have missed public comment. So I'll yield over to her, let her step up and speak.
Yes, ma'am. Please come forward. Yes, ma'am. Just please set your name and address for the record.
My name is Kathy White, five seven two one, County Road one thirty-six A, Live Oak.
Welcome.
Thank you. I am here today, um, I am a small business owner here in Swanee County. I own a small hair salon. And as of April second, as everybody knows, we were deemed non-essential, which I think we are essential. We have a lot of professionals in here that need us. I have a lot of essential workers. They work at the courthouse, the tag office, the banks, the postal. I feel like we are essential to them. And I came here today to ask you to be on our side. I understand the governor's point that we cannot do the six-foot distance. But the one thing that our industry taught us is safety, sanitation, and sterilization. Because at my standpoint, if you could catch anything, you'd be at a hair salon. You have a lot of people coming in and out, a lot of people sitting in your chairs, but because of what our education taught us, you don't have that. I'm asking you to help us get with the governor. I sent him an email stating things that I'm saying to you today, to let us get back in the workforce, to take care of the essential people. We could have one person in our salon at a time. We could wear a mask. I'm not opposed to even wearing the face shield, a cover-up. The gloves I'm against. I keep hand sanitizer in my pocket. We could do these things and have a note on our door that states no walk-in, appointments only. My salon only has two people in it. The last week, we didn't even work the same day. We worked a day, she worked a day. Bigger salons could do two people because you could space out six-foot distance in there. And I know we cannot be that far from them, but they're not in our face. They're turned away from us and we do know how to do proper sanitation. So I'm just here today to ask y'all to be on our side, to get with the governor and see if we can at least get back in there to help out our essential employees just for now.
Yes, ma'am. I, and I'll let the board comment any bonus.
I just noticed she didn't look at me when she said some of your essential people. She went right past me. I did notice that.
I didn't leave you out on purpose, Mr. Don.
Uh, with that being said, I did read where I think the state of Georgia has done that as, yesterday, I think they're limiting, uh, you know, people of, of hair salons and things of that nature by appointment only. Uh, I would like to think that our state will do that very soon.
We know how to do the sanitation. We do. And we use a product that is called barbicide. And it's strong disinfectant. It's two ounces to thirty-two ounces of water. We use it to sanitize. We use it to sanitize our combs, our brushes. I keep a spray bottle and after every client, I spray all my shears, my clippers, all this down and everything is wiped down because we're taught after every client, you clean up. You don't leave the hair for the next client to come sit in. You sweep up, you clean up your station and you start over. And I believe we could do this.
I would like to clarify though, that the one thing you said about being on your side, trust me, we're on your side. We're just limited by the state and the federal government. That's, that's the only problem. We're, we're on the people of Swan County's side.
Well, I know the governor of Georgia is going to let them go back on Monday. Um, and they, what they're doing is if you are an essential employee, you have to take your work order or what permit with you to the salon, a copy of it. And that salon has to keep that on, in a file.
Yep.
And I think that's a good idea.
Thank you so much. And your comments are duly noted.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anything else? Commissioner Gamble.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hale, closing comments.
I don't have anything. I just, I just again, thank our community, thank our department heads, the people that's here today. And again, just, we're all in this together. I know that sounds cliche and everyone keeps saying it, but it is true. Again, we as a board are finding our way through this as well and having these round table discussions, as you call it, that's, that's how we become successful. Communication is the key. I just appreciate everyone. Thank you.
Yes, sir. We appreciate that. Before we have our closing prayer, what I'll do today is we'll just vote to adjourn and that way when we stand up, we don't have to try to get everybody back discombobulated. I just appreciate everybody. I know there's your long meetings, there's your trying times, but we're going to get through this as a community, we're going to get through it together. We're going to strive to do better every day. I, I sit here and just listen to everybody and everyone's frustrated, I realize that. But at the end of the day, we're going to overcome these obstacles in front of us and we're going to be better for it. Here lately, I've, I've been liking, liking to close with a positive quote. Today I run across one that kind of fit everything that we talked about. It's from the great Henry Ford. He said, "Don't find the fault, find the remedy." And with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Got a motion by Commissioner Fleming.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Will everyone please stand for invocation?
Closing prayer.
Since I have to say, dear Lord, it's a pleasure to take and come before you today. Dear Lord, I pray that your will would be done in our lives, in this county, in our state, in our nation. Dear Lord, I swear that in our community, we have so many families that have been impacted and people in the nursing home. And dear Lord, it's all right, I ask a special calmness that you would give to them. We ask for healing of their bodies. Dear Lord, I, I pray that you would just continue to, to take and watch over those that have been impacted. Dear Lord, I swear that you tell us not to be anxious. But dear Lord, I have to admit, sometimes we find ourselves in, in times in which we do become anxious. Dear Lord, I swear we know that you're the only one that can take and bring the calmness, the only one that can bring the peace. Dear Lord, I pray that you would be with our leaders, both locally as well as our state and nation. I pray that you would give them the wisdom to take and undertake the business that comes before them. I pray that you would help them to always look after the people that they represent. Dear Lord, I pray that you would just show us how that we can take and serve each other. I swear that that's what it's all about. Say I love you, dear Lord, and I know that, I know that you're still in control. I pray that you would take and bring us back again next time. I pray that you would watch over us until that time that we gather again. In Christ's name, I pray, amen.
Amen.